We don't have any requested legislation tonight. We don't have pending legislation. I do have a couple of updates on some things that are going on, on the streets. Asphalt resurfacing is complete for the road program. However, they are still finishing the dry vacuums and utility adjustments for the street resurfacing program. State Street will continue to be one lane on both sides, north and south lanes, due to the amount of casting adjustments. I think it took them a little bit longer to do that. Should be back to four lane by next week. Hudson Run, Monday, which was today, they're milling the west end between Hudson and 31st. Tuesday through Friday, they're going to be surfacing, putting the asphalt in. And then other things, signal work at Fourth, Fire Station, and Hudson Run. That's going to go on during this week. So those are the updates for the street program. Anybody else?
I think you meant to say Worcester Road West as the street.
That's what I meant. No, Hudson Run.
Yeah, but it's on Worcester Road West.
Okay, cool.
I only know this because they redid the barrel placements and might have hit one.
Oh, okay. All right. Is there any other, anybody online? Go ahead.
What about Worcester Road West between 31st and Flickinger, Cranch Drive? That section that we talked about a year and a half ago.
We discussed adding that to the program this year. It was not added to the residential payment program this year, so it will be looked at next year.
Anybody else?
I got, I guess.
Go ahead, Chuck.
State Street, I was up there Saturday in the morning. There's quite a bit of the curb that's busted, and it's still there. Like chunks are up on the sidewalk. We might want to find out if that's something they've done. It's, it's new. A resident called, and Jen told me about it, and I knew she wasn't going to be here. So I went there Saturday and looked at it, and there is quite a bit of damage along, just to be the south side of the street, of the curb. Before they get out of there, they can fix it if they have to fix it.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? With nothing else, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All right. We are adjourned at 6:03.
Who seconded that?
I second.
Oh, no, Chuck, you're not on the, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
I totally wrote down something. Sorry. All right. Now we're adjourned at 6:03. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Next up is Environmental Health and Social Services, and that's Ms. Hager. Mrs. Haber's absent today, so it'll fall to Mr. Griffin.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. The time is 6:03. Environmental Health and Social Services, I would like to call this meeting to order today. It is Monday, September 15th. We are in council chambers, and Mrs. Haber is absent, Mrs. Thompson is absent, Justin Greer and myself as co-chair present. Tonight, we have requests for legislation, and we have no pending legislation. Do we have any miscellaneous questions for help?
Nope. Just like to add that there is no quorum for this.
Just me and you?
So, we didn't have a vote anyways, so it's just me. Next up is Planning and Analysis and Codes with Mr. Heideck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning and Analysis and Codes, Monday, September 15th, 2025, 6:05 in council chambers. The present committee is Counselor Harris, President Greer, myself as chair, Counselor Thompson is absent, all else noted. Couple requests. First one from myself requesting legislation to regard short-term rental units, emergency wording, one reading requested. Excuse me. This was worked on last year within various departments and just kind of went by the wayside, so bringing it back out. Is there any questions? Counsel Harris?
How does this affect like hotel, hotels, motels like Berlin? Because we do have, that's a short term.
Director Miller, did you?
Ms. Miller? No, it's limited to houses. Houses, apartments, and a house.
Single family.
Thank you.
And is this comparable to like our rental registration stuff?
Very closely mirrors it.
Because I noticed that-
But it's, it's more geared towards the Airbnb.
Airbnbs.
VRBO, VRBO, which Counselor Beck, you know which the acronym is. The one that starts with a V.
Airbnbs and VRBOs.
VRBO.
I never remember which order they go in. But that's mostly the gist of those because, for one, you could theoretically circumvent rental registration by being one of those and having agreements, and then make yourself immune from rental registration. Kind of loophole that needs to be closed.
Yeah. I know that the Airbnb, you know, you have, they have the million-dollar umbrella policy. They also have some strict rules, and a lot of people are using them anyways to, you know, do their stuff. So. So my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Did we, other than our rental registration, did we model this off of anything else that other places have against the short-term rentals?
Director Miller?
Yes. It's not against the short-term rentals. It's finding out where they are. So for example, you can talk to Chief Morber or Lieutenant White, and they will tell you these are becoming increasingly an issue in neighborhoods. So you have a bunch of owner-occupied structures, and then every weekend, there's a big old party in a home that used to be owner-occupied and now, you know. Obviously, VRBOs or Airbnbs are very, very popular in tourist destinations, right? Well, I can't, I don't believe, after living here my entire life, that this is actually a tourist destination. So people are using it for very different reasons.
Yes.
And they're disruptive to the neighborhood.
They are. I, I think there are five in Barberton, I think, last I checked.
Any others?
No, sorry. No.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. In favor?
Aye.
And the next one, another request from myself regarding legislation to amend 124 2021 to allow for dollar store infills while keeping the moratorium in force regarding new construction permitting, emergency wording, and one reading requested. The purpose of this is, there's, there's ambiguity between dollar stores and grocery stores, and there is a building that could potentially be slightly both. More furniture than dollar store, but it is still a dollar store. Now, when you look at the purpose of the moratorium, the stores that were targeted were ones that they build exactly what they want, and they don't want to move into existing buildings. That's just their business model. This would allow for the business model, ones that are more grocery to move in to existing buildings without allowing some of the ISO type ones to be popping up everywhere. Are there any questions on this?
Chair.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering if this was ran by, if there was any feedback from the city and planning department? Because they were the ones that suggested that moratorium put in place. If there's any feedback from?
Yeah, so, thank you. Mrs. Miller and I have actually been working on this for a long time. We feel that doing the amendment is the best route to go because essentially, originally, it was intended to not take up commercial space in town and build new ones because we're, obviously, we're landlocked, and dollar stores were popping up all over the place. But we have an opportunity to fill a vacant building that has otherwise not had any interest. So we felt amending the ordinance would be most appropriate.
Mr. Murray, I saw you. Want to add something?
No, I was pointing, the President had his hand up. I agree with everything that was said. We've been discussing this for a while. You know, dollar stores meant one thing. You know, the moratorium was put on. It's kind of morphed into something else that's a little more neighborhood-friendly, community-friendly.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chair.
Any others? Seeing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
That is it for requests. And for miscellaneous, Director Card, do I have to ask?
You don't have to ask. I have a couple of things. Not being one of them. I want to touch base with you guys a little bit, so hopefully you can be the voice in your neighborhoods about the demolitions that are taking place. We have had several phone calls after a property comes down, that they're calling us because they want to buy the property next to them. We don't own the properties when we tear them down. What happens is we, you know, contact a property owner, who owns the property, it's deteriorating, and it's the lack of response from the property owner is the reason you have to tear these properties down. After we raise the property, we have to assess property taxes. We assess every September. So, again, we don't own the properties, but there could eventually be back taxes, and then the person of interest could work through Summit County Land Bank. And if you want, I can touch base a little bit about that, too. But again, the city of Barberton, we don't own the properties. They, we can't make the property owners sell them or list them with the market. So just be mindful if people are calling and asking, I know Emily, you had a couple neighbors untapped, and I didn't speak with them. But we can't go after every property that we raise. We can only inform residents of Summit County Land Bank. Summit County Land Bank is a program in place. Once a property has, or certified delinquent taxes, an interested party could go to summitcountylandbank.org and apply through the side lot program. It gives the county the ability to go through the foreclosure process in order to get that property free and clear and then sell it to an interested party. Again, they have to be certified delinquent, and it does take quite a while for those properties to be foreclosed on. So just, if they have questions, I mean, they're always more than welcome to call the planning department, but if you guys could, you know, push them that way as well. Yes.
Certified, though, would have to be 12 months plus the next quarter, right, or a half? Because you're looking at 18 months.
Potentially.
To be certified.
Yeah. But another thing we have to be mindful of is, so, for example, the Taft Avenue property, you know, it was torn down after our assessment already went into place. So that won't get assessed until next September. So if there's a purchase, or if the property owner buys it within that 12-month period, I mean, there's a possibility that they're going to get taxed $15,000, and they're not going to know about it. So they also have to be mindful of that if they're, they're looking at purchasing it from the property owner. Sometimes, you know, they are going to, you know, six months down the road, a year down the road, they're going to get a tax bill for $20,000, and they're not going to know why. So just educating them through that process. Development code, Mr. Griffin? Did you have a question?
No.
No?
He's on the board, right, of the land bank?
Yes.
He might have some great information if you guys need it.
I bet he does. And then Mr. Heideck is going to ask about the development code. I had a Zoom meeting with Arthur a few weeks back, going over the comments that Mrs. Miller and I had to make changes to. It was a good meeting. We went through all the comments. He did reply back after that meeting last week with some questions. So I'm going through those questions, and we're going to reassess them. We're in the home stretch. I promise. We're in the home stretch. I know you're looking at me.
May of 2026.
We can shoot for it. Any other questions?
This, this OHM? Is that who it is?
Yes.
It was OHM, and they were partnering with another firm, and I can't think of the, for the legal side of all, all of the things.
Like on the side, they run like a barbecue joint or something? What, seriously, is, they, they're sending you questions now?
About our comments, yes.
How many, do you know, and are you even allowed to ask, how many other things they work on during the course of a week? Are we, are we seriously this far on the back burner to these guys, it seems like, at least to me?
So I mean, I know they have, you know, they have a staff of, I don't know, 800, I'm making that number up, but they do other things other than development codes. I've been working with Arthur directly through this process. I can't give them 100% of the blame because we had a lot of turnover and, you know, the time I would like to spend on it. I can't really do that at the moment, but it's been a learning process and, you know, kind of difficult, but we're in the home stretch.
So it just seems, you have to understand my frustration. Some of these counselors weren't even sitting here when we approved this and the whole process got started, and some of us are on our way out without it being done. So that's kind of unnerving to me with this company. But I trust you.
Thanks.
If you need, if they need somebody to, if you need somebody to remind them with powerful language.
You'll be my first home call.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you. I'll second. Thank you. We are adjourned at 6:17.
Thank you, Mr. Heideck. All right. We have a special rules marketing and development today, and that will be Ms. Hager.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to bring the special rules marketing and development meeting to order. It's Monday, September 15th, 2025, and it is 6:17 PM. We are in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, including myself as chair, Mrs. Beck as co-chair, Mr. Heideck, and President Greer. Other council members are noted on my sheet, and we are missing Counselor Thompson and Hager. I have a requests for legislation letter from Law Director Lisa Miller requesting legislation to withdraw ordinance number 114-2025 titled, "Proposed Amendment to Charter Section 6.03A to Remove the Requirement That All Five of the Members of the Parks and Recreation Board Be Appointed by the Mayor." This withdrawal request is due to the conflict with ordinance number 125-2025. This section has been requested by the Board of Elections. Emergency wording and one reading is requested. Do we have any remarks or questions about this? I need to invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend Council Rule 302, the timeliness, and Rule 304, not on the agenda. Can I have a motion to suspend these rules?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, can I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This is a special, so that's all we had to discuss. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 6:18 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Hager. All right. Last but not least, Finance and Personnel with Mrs. Thompson. Mrs. Thompson absent, co-chair, Mr. Heideck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance and Personnel, it is Monday, September 15th, 2025, 6:20 PM in council chambers. Present committee is Counselor Griffin, President Greer, myself as co-chair with Chairman Thompson absent tonight. Two requests tonight. First is a letter from our willing judge requesting legislation to apply to the Barberton Community Foundation for a grant in the amount of up to $25,000, excuse me, for the America 250 and Barberton 135 celebrations in 2026. Emergency wording and one reading requested. Mr. Murray, do you have anything to add to this?
Yeah, we've been working on this since it was released back January this year. So looking for the foundation to help support purchasing items that will help celebrate America 250 next year and the city's 155th anniversary, whether that's tangible, physical things that we can purchase and give out, or if it's, we're looking at doing some public art. So there's a lot of things we're continuing to move forward on. Their grant application is due October 1st, and that's why I asked for the emergency. So sent over the, kind of the white paper draft to them earlier today.
Are there any questions? Mayor, I know the, the America 250, I know you invited me to be on that committee. I haven't been able to get there, but with the Barberton 135 celebration, do you have a different group that's kind of thinking anything?
One second.
Thank you. No other questions? Do I have a motion to call for this?
No move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have a letter from Chief Prowlsec of the Fire Department requesting legislation to appropriate $7,687.50 from the city grant fund to the Fire Department's capital budget. Emergency wording requested. Did everybody see the request for the retractable hose there? I did speak to the chief today. He said, once, if, if this is approved, it's not a custom item, that if approved, they have it within a couple of days. Any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
No move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is it for requests? Is there any miscellaneous for Finance and Personnel? Director, you have anything? Seeing nothing, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 6:23.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Heideck. That concludes our individual committee meetings for this evening. I'd like just to take like a minute, one minute. I got to check some paperwork real fast and make sure everything's aligned. We'll begin the committee of the
I had to be here, Marty. We would have liked-
All right. All right. We're going to go ahead and begin. Today, September 15th, 2025. This is a committee of the whole meeting for Barberton City Council. I call this meeting to order at 6:25 PM. Please stand for the fudge of leave.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we're going to jump right into citizens addressing council. When I call your name, if you just step up to one of these microphones, state your name, address, and reason for speaking. We'll give you five minutes. Do note that council will not talk back. They will not address questions, but you're more than welcome to stay after if you wanted to actually have a conversation with any council members. So we're going to start with Mr. Noir.
Good evening. I was here about a month ago, and I talked to Chuck, and we had a brief session about some of the items up on Robinson Avenue and Lang Street where we have excessive speeding, loud mufflers- The second thing is, I've got a manhole cover for the past year on Robinson right at Knight Street, where Knight Street comes out and needs it. Every time a heavy truck goes over, it sounds like a shotgun going off. And it's repeatedly, all the time, day and night. And in talking to the mayor earlier, that when 585 comes through on Worcester Road, it's gonna get worse. And it just needs a repair job. That's all it needs. I know you have many, many things going on in Barbados right now, as far as the streets and the repairs and everything that's going on. I'm looking for this thing to pop up anytime, and it's gonna be, someone's gonna get hurt or killed. The second, the last thing is the left-hand turn signal at Robinson and Fifth. We have three left-hand turn signals at Fifth and Robinson. For the life of me, I do not understand why there is not one. If you're heading west on Robinson and you go to Fifth Street and you wanna make a left-hand turn signal, you sit there for one, two, maybe even three lights, depending on the time of day. I see people cutting through the bank. I know people that cut through Giant Eagle. And it's silly that we don't have this, and why it was never put in to begin with is, I have no idea. But those are my issues with the east side personally, and I think other people that live in that area have the same issues. I've talked to several of the older people in that area, and they wish me well coming down here. But everybody has the same problem right now. And I would like to see some attention to the speeding, the manhole cover, and the silliness of no left-hand turns at Fifth and Robinson. With that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Noir. All right. Ms. Cool.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to come speak with you. My name is Jeannie Cool, and I'm the manager of Evidence-Based Practices and Outcomes at the Summit County ADM Board. So our executive director, Amy Wayne, was not able to come. Both of us are residents of Barbados, though, so you're well represented. But I do have with me Amy Woodland, our manager of communications, and we also have Colin and Lincoln, and we're proud of our partnership with the Barbados Baseball League. So today, I'm coming before you to ask for your support for our levy that is on the ballot this November, just to share a little bit about what we do. Summit County Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Board, or we also kind of go by the ADM Board. We are one of the county boards in the state of Ohio, so every county has a board, and we are responsible by statute for the planning, funding, and oversight of all mental health and addiction services in Summit County. So we do not provide services, but we do fund agencies to do that kind of service. So some of those have offices here right in Barbados, so there's Court of Crime, Behavioral Health, you may have heard of, Child Guidance and Family Solutions, which is just right here across the street, and then Red Oak Behavioral Health does school-based services here in Barbados through schools. If you look at our resource directory, this shows we fund about 30 agencies that have multiple different programs and services across the county, and we are able to provide those services to those that are uninsured, underinsured, or even cover those services that may not be covered by insurance, such as prevention services. And so if you look kind of in your packet as well, to our, it's our last state fiscal year impact report, I think it's the third to last page, kind of shows, so our revenue was over $46 million. Seventy-seven percent of that was levy-funded, so we've been well-supported across our county, and that allows us to provide those critical services to members, or community members of Barbados and across Summit County. Our expenditures, if you look, you can see the addiction services, mental health services, those are traditional treatment services. We have prevention and early childhood, and then other contracts that are recovery housing, victim assistance programming, CIT programming, which is training and support for our law enforcement officers. So that's all, comes to about 93% of our expenditures went back into the community this last year, and so we are proud of that. You'll also see our tip card. So we are issue one on the ballot in November. We are asking for renewal with a slight increase. What that would be, for a house that is as county assessed at $100,000, that would be about $6.25 a month. That would be an increase of what we're currently looking at for that assessed house of about $18 a year. So that, that allows us to provide those services that we need here in our community. Mental health is a vital part of the overall health of individuals in our community, and it is more crucial, crucial than ever to provide those services. So we would appreciate your support this November, and if you have any questions, I am here to answer them. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
My name is Glenn Yasco. My address is 3717 Orr Avenue, Norton, Ohio. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today. My intentions are to help Barbados residents understand the proposed data project center at the former PPG Limestone facility in Norton. There's little information about the details of this project available. Questions like how much noise, how much CO2 will be released, and other questions cannot be answered now by Norton's planning commission or council until the details are released by the developers of the project. Concerns, questions, and can be raised, and opinions can be formed by individual research of existing AI and data centers. Knowledge and awareness will be gained by individual research. I want to thank each and every one on this council for allowing me, a non-resident, to speak on an issue that may affect our communities. Once again, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Ms. Green.
I just have a statement to read in regards to the West Theater. The address is 1017 Worcester Road, West, Barbados, Ohio, 4420. I am also a Barbados resident and live at 4821st Street, Northwest Barbados. Ever since I have taken over the theater, I've had nothing but opposition from the mayor and the city. They want us back to Frobster trying to move the West Theater downtown, stealing the name, the Facebook, and even the website. We had to hire an attorney to get it all back. As soon as that happened, then the Fire Department shut me down, to later find out they had no right to do so. The Fire Department reported me to the Building Department one time that I had done work without a permit. I didn't do the work, but nobody verified, and the Building Department filed an adjudication order against me in Columbus that I had to fight, just because someone said I did it, not because I did do it. I tried to add a ghost kitchen to the theater because I was not allowed to open it to the public, only to service the theater, so I tried to open a ghost kitchen when the theater was closed, and within one week, I had the Fire Department and the Building Department at my door, sent out by Lisa Miller. Why? I got so much harassment over trying to have this ghost kitchen, in less than a month, I had to ask the gentleman to move out. The Building Department held us up on moving to our new kitchen. It took us almost two years. We spent 18 months trying to get a plumber. We were blackballed. No one in town would do it. Business owners telling contractors lies about us when they don't even know us. We eventually got a contractor outside of Barbados to do the job, but he had to register with Barbados and go through a bunch of hassle to do our plumbing for us. Then the Police Department has not been our friend either. They make customers move cars, literally, if they block a driveway by one inch with a bumper. They will interrupt my event and make them move. The Chief of Police has accused me of selling alcohol without a license. I didn't do it, but again, someone said I did, so I was questioned about, put through crap over something I didn't do. A cop once made me tear down a Valentine's display 30 minutes before the start of my Elvis event to give an employee that had quit that day some $1 Dollar Street Tree Lights that was on a display. I told him, you know, the employee quit that day, blah, blah, blah. He told me that if I didn't listen to him and go down there and tear up that display and give him these $1 set of lights, that I would go to jail for theft and obstruction of justice. After my customers started coming, I did, I did comply, and I did tear apart the display. My police have no right to tell a business owner what to do and threaten jail time. That's between me and my employees, and especially when the employee quit, like four hours before this event. They were just trying to cause me problems. The police reported me to the Safety Director last year. They said I was over capacity for an event, but yet, they never came inside, they never verified how many people were there. They just said, based on the amount of cars parked around, we must be over occupancy. Even though I reported and pointed out to them that that was a homecoming for Barbados, and there were people everywhere, and the cops, I told him, they'd already been out earlier today over cars blocking driveways that were not at my event, that it's a homecoming party down the road, but he reported me to the Safety Director anyhow, and then she required, then after that, I have two extra security for my events. I just feel like, you know, they're just constantly on me to keep me closed and keep me bankrupt. Then, the worst thing with this detour, we were the only business on Worcester Road that was not given a detour. I called ODOT, I called Denmark, I called everybody. I gave up. We were never offered a detour. That's why I had to close my kitchen. That's why I had to close my theater. They closed that 21st Street at least 100 days. We had U-Hauls being dropped on Liberty. He had U-Hauls being dropped down by his other stores, because people couldn't get to us. You gotta roll close on. I don't think it was appropriate to close for two years a business's entrant and not offer us any kind of detour. But we were not offered a detour, and I did try to get one. So this is just some of the samples of stuff that the city puts me through. But I'm here today to ask for the city, for once and all, just after all, to support the West Theater. If we can't get support from the city and the town, then why should I even reopen? You know, I'm getting ready to reopen, but if I'm just gonna be harassed all the time by building and police and fire, why should I even do it? Why should I even do it? I understand parking's an issue. I have tried and tried, I was talking about that side lot program. I tried to buy property through the side lot program once. I was denied by Jim Stephan, told I couldn't buy it. So I am hoping, this house just came down behind the theater today, I'm hoping the side lot program, the city won't block us, because last time we tried to do it, they blocked us, and we couldn't get the property. Then it got sold to somebody else. That would fix my parking problem if I could get that lot, if I don't get blocked. So I'm here to ask the city not to block me from buying this property. I could add 40 parking spaces. I would get rid of this parking issue, and I wouldn't have cars on the street. And I, I just wish the harassment would stop and the town would support the theater. If the town and the city don't want the theater, I'm closing for storage unit. Like, I don't know what to do. But financially, I can't do it anymore. You know, I can't keep, I've been closed for two years. And then the sewer system, oh, that was another one. I will say the mayor came out, they took care of that, and I appreciate that. But that's the first time the city's ever had any, I've ever had help in seven years. So I'm just coming here today asking for the city's help so the West Theater can reopen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green. All right. That concludes our citizens addressing council, so we're gonna hop into committee reports. We're gonna start with street sidewalk and lighting with Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Street sidewalk and lighting has nothing to report this evening, without a pass.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Environmental health and social services, Mr. Griffin.
Environmental health and social services has nothing to report, sir.
All right. Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Planning and annexation codes, Mr. Heideck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning and annexation codes is calling for the following. Legislation regarding short-term rental units, and legislation to amend 124-2021 to allow dollar store infills while keeping the moratorium in force regarding new construction and permitting. With that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Heideck. City properties, parks, and recreation, Ms. Easter.
Thank you, Mr. President. City properties, parks, and recreation has nothing to report this evening, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Easter. Public welfare and safety, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public welfare and safety met September 8th here in council chambers, and we have nothing to report.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Rules, marketing, and development, Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rules, marketing, and development met on September 8th, and we called for ordinance 127-2025, which was opposing cuts to the CDBG program. We then met again on September 15th, and we called to withdraw ordinance 114-2025, the proposed amendment to the charter section, because this was in conflict with ordinance number 125-2025. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhardt. City utilities, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Finance and personnel, Mr. Heideck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance and personnel is calling for the following. Legislation to apply to the Barbados Community Foundation for a grant up to $25,000 for the America 250 and Barbados 135 celebrations in 2026, and legislation to appropriate $7,687.50 from the city grant fund to the Fire Department's capital budget, and without a pass.
All right. Appreciate it. That concludes our committee report.
rental units, and legislation to amend 124-2021 to allow dollar store infills while keeping the moratorium in force regarding new construction and permitting. Without a pass.
Thank you, Mr. Heidig. City Properties, Parks, and Recreation, Ms. Easterlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. City Properties, Parks, and Recreation has nothing to report this evening, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Ms. Easterlin. Public Welfare and Safety, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Welfare and Safety met September 8th here in council chambers, and we have nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Rules, Marketing, Development, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rules, Marketing, and Development met on September 8th, and we called for Ordinance 127-2025, which was opposing cuts to the CDBG program. We then met again on September 15th, and we called to withdraw Ordinance 114-2025, the proposed amendment to the Charter section, because this was in conflict with Ordinance Number 125-2025. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhart. City Utilities, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have nothing to report, without a pass.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Finance and Personnel, Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance and Personnel is calling for the following: legislation to apply to the Barberton Community Foundation for a grant up to twenty-five thousand for the America 250 and Barberton 135 celebrations in 2026, and legislation to appropriate seven thousand, six hundred, eighty-seven dollars, fifty cents from the city grant fund to the fire department's capital budget, and without a pass.
All right, appreciate it. That concludes our committee reports. I have nothing to report. Is there anything from the body? Anything from Department Heads? Oh, sorry, Ms. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Shreeb, it was said earlier about a manhole, I did make the department aware of that in early August, was there any outcome of that for Robinson and Knight?
I sent them an email, and I'm waiting for a follow-up. So, I mean, it could have been addressed, manhole lift pulls out, rock gets in there, I don't know how many times we're in and out of this manhole, I don't know if it's a trouble spot, I don't know much about it. I mean, one little rock getting in the manhole could cause a rock and rattle, so, but I will make sure that it gets addressed again.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Heidig. Is there anything else from the body? Anything from Department Heads? All right, Mayor's Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank all the speakers that came up today and expressed their concerns on various issues, especially the ADM Board, huge important resource here in the entire area, and they do provide very many critical services. Unfortunately, the GEE continues to grow, so take serious look into their levy proposal before November. I emailed council earlier with some updates, but just to kinda go through a few of them, NICSOL did come from my office. NICSOL mostly is used for, you know, road closures and safety issues, but can be used for community service items. It was felt that since the trashcan ordinance does affect every single owner, residential property owner, that it's something that, and kind of a change, that it's something that we should get out there, so that was used for that. Many infrastructure projects going on, as we heard earlier this evening. Worcester Road West started milling the section between Hudson Run and 31st Street, final coat of asphalt for all of Worcester Road should be coming on very soon. West State Street, as was mentioned, continuing to work on the resurfacing and strengthening around the manholes and some of those castings there. Waterline on Wisteria, that's continuing to move forward. Frank and Fifth Street waterline starting soon, as will Stratford as well. Did you get a response to your email from last week? You'd emailed about an update?
No, I did. I was gonna ask you that question, because I've had a lot of people ask me, hey, when they getting started on, starting on Stratford?
I know that they were waiting to get all their pieces and parts, the valves, the pipes, all that stuff.
Do you have an estimation of time? Have they provided?
Todd and I did not get a chance to talk today about that. A lot of things happened over the weekend, but yeah, we'll get an update for you.
Thank you.
So a lot going on, a lot of stormwater mitigation projects going on as well. So I want to thank everyone who attended the Main Street Second Saturday event downtown this past weekend, and also the Saturday Liter League, which was in a Saturday morning, as well as the Qantas 5K coming down Robinson Avenue. A lot of great community events and activities throughout the downtown. Not if you're sick, but hopefully with warmer weather, you can get out there and take part in some of these things. I do want to congratulate the Barberton High School Football Team, who retained the bell, beating Cogga Falls this past weekend. And then finally, the Trushen Farm Housing Development continuing to move along, lots of great progress out there. We knew that the amount of time it would take to move, the amount of ground and earth that had to happen because of the topography out there would take months, and that's mostly done. A lot of piles of pipe and inlets and all kinds of things that are out there. The sanitary lift station was installed last week, but it's starting to come together, still an open barren field with a lot of pockets of pipe and things of that nature, but starting to come together. So a lot has been done, but a lot more has to be done before it starts to look like a development. So that's all I have, unless there's any questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. With nothing else, this meeting is adjourned at 6:51. Is there any objection to just rolling and getting this special legislation out of the way from anybody?
Take a minute.
All right. Give me a second to collect my thoughts here. All right, rolling into the next thing on the agenda, and this will be the last for this evening. This is a regular legislative meeting, a special regular legislative meeting for Barberton City Council. Today is September 15th, 2025. I call this meeting to order at 6:52 PM. We're gonna go for our normal stuff. Clerk, can you please call the roll, please?
Ms. Easterlin.
Here.
Ms. Gerhart.
Here.
Ms. Thompson is absent, Mr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Hager is absent, Mr. Heidig.
Here.
Ms. Beck.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
I'm present, thank you. All right, first reading of ordinances and resolutions.
Ordinance Number 145-2025, presented by Ms. Gerhart, titled Withdrawal Ordinance Number 114-2025, Amendment to Charter Section 6.03A. And ordinance withdrawing ordinance Number 114-2025, titled Proposed Amendment to Charter Section 6.03A, to remove the requirement that all five members of the Parks and Recreation Board be appointed by the mayor, and declaring emergency.
All right, motion to suspend, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, Ms. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I second Ms. Gerhart's motion on suspension.
Thank you. Motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Ms. Beck to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks from the body? All right, Clerk, can you please call the roll for suspension?
Ms. Hager is absent, Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Easterlin.
Yes.
Mr. Heidig.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson is absent, Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart.
Yes.
Ms. Beck.
Yes.
All right, that meets the minimum requirement, so motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of Ordinance Number 145-2025.
Thank you, Ms. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I second Ms. Gerhart's motion on adoption.
Thank you. Motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Ms. Beck to adopt Ordinance Number 145-2025. Are there any remarks from the body? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Ms. Beck.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson is absent, Mr. Heidig.
Yes.
Mr. Easterlin.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Hager is absent.
All right, motion for adoption carries. We do have two absent today. I'll ask rules, Ms. Gerhart, Mr. Heidig, do you see it appropriate to excuse members since it was a regular, or a committee of the whole meeting today?
I suppose it should be on the regular legislative next week, specials shouldn't have it on there.
Okay, gotcha. All right, well, there is nothing else, so do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion is adjourned.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second that. Mr. Harris raises his hand. Thought I had to.
All right, a motion was made by Mr. Heidig and seconded by Mr. Harris, that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And think so. All right, the special legislation is adjourned at 6:55 PM.